Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, August 25, 2025, at 6:30 PM. I would like to make note of all councilors present this evening with the inclusion of our city administrator, Mr. Ohanko. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, there is no general this evening. Item number five is committee correspondence to the council. Are there any councilors wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item six, that is public comment. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward to this podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to address council.
I'm Melissa Field, and I live at 160 Bradley Street. And I wanted to offer some comments on the grievance committee recommendations, standard operating procedures. So on pages three, the bottom of page three, top of page four, it states, "The language should indicate that planning board members are permitted to cite public hearing testimony as a consideration in their deliberations of findings of fact." And then there is a qualifier, "When a specific standard of approval has not been met." So I had a question and concern about the qualifier. So what I did was I did some, get some further perspective by looking at the Maine Superior Court ruling on the Lincoln Village Project. Page seven, "The court gives a definition of substantial evidence, as substantial evidence exists when a reasonable mind would rely on that evidence as sufficient support for a conclusion." Then I went to the June 20, 2023 preliminary approval hearing, the audio recording on the topic of traffic, and that starts at two hours and 18 minutes into the recording, goes for about an hour with a break in between. It's worth, you know, listening to, it's a good, it's a good discussion. What I heard was a discussion about how the court would scoff at planning board decisions that were made that did not have a balance of evidence. At the time, they had a 3-3 tie on traffic, and so that's what they were discussing. And it was emphasized that technical detail from experts carries more weight than public opinion. But the court didn't see it that way. On page eight, in the last paragraph of the court ruling, "The court conceded that the developer of the Lincoln Village Project probably had better quantity and quality of evidence. Despite that, the developer did not persuade the board. The public did." The court affirmed the planning board's decision. The grievance committee recommendations seem to indicate that only if and when the expert evidence falls short is the board able to consider the public hearing testimony. Perhaps more specific language needs to be added to the grievance committee recommendations, explaining that, "At the very outset, guidance from experts and the persuasive voice of the people are both critical to fully informing a reasonable mind." The court seemed to put experts and the public on equal footing, despite the imbalance of technical evidence favoring the experts versus those who just understood the local conditions, which would be the residents. It's time to rectify that imbalance in our standard operating procedures and consider getting in alignment with the court ruling in order to ensure clarity on this very important process. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Hello, Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road. Here to speak first on behalf of SOS Saco Bay. Of all weekends, I was away, and I guess some fun things happened this weekend, so I want to thank the city for their attentiveness down there. Haven't even checked it out yet, but, but all the more reason why before you tonight is to pass the first step in a beach management plan. I want to just go over just a quick history on that. I'm all for the consultant help here and to develop, and I know there's going to be concerns about cost. And I think we get to this step first, but, but when you think about costs, we have a lot of tribal knowledge and also history with beach management plans. I promised that I was going to look up. I couldn't find the full detail, but there was a couple of stages that we certainly had discussed and also passed something, which was in 2015 or 16, what led to the, say, the leash law on dogs, that, that was discussed at length while we were trying to get the Army Corps to come on to the beach. And then the second phase of when we dredge the Saco River, if you check the minutes of the Coastal Commission back in 2018, you know, that was discussed as well. It's like, well, we got sand coming on, but we need to have a beach management plan. So we've had kind of too many go-arounds of this, and I just don't think it has to be too elaborate and use some of the, some of the knowledge, the documents, tribal knowledge that we had to get to that point. And I, I think, and also too, I've said this before, you have $46 million coming into this community, and our cost share, our official cost share is zero. I know there's labor and time and all that, but, but I do think that to manage what is going to come to us here, the long term, this is a beach management plan for all our beaches, and it's worthy of that attention. And then the final thing, I'll say as SOS president, as school board member, and as a citizen, sad to see John Ohanko leaving. He has done yeoman's work for the city, for us. I've had good relationships with the prior city administrators and, and, but I just want to say how, how helpful he has been to get us to almost the finish lines of this, and we're going to miss him. And I appreciate his professional and personal demeanor and friendship with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'm David Plaven. I live at 36 Lower Beach Road in Saco. I'm also the chairman of the City of Saco Shoreline Commission and the vice president of Save Our Shore Saco Bay. I was not intending to speak to beach management tonight, even though it is on the agenda, but in light of what happened over the weekend, I think it just brings more urgency that we need to, to get more in place, and hopefully incidents like the ones we just experienced will become less impactful. Until that time, though, I need to thank, I know Travis is here, that Public Works, the response is just, we're incredibly fortunate. They make us whole again very quickly, plow tons of sand away and fix whatever needs to be fixed, and they were down there today and did a wonderful job. What I really wanted to do was to thank the city administrator, John. You've given us too short a time, but the progress we've made while you were here has been amazing. We've gone from the Army Corps project, which you've moved forward to the point that we may actually see some rocks in the water next spring. You supported the county dredge program. We're also optimistic that we're going to see that in action also this spring, or maybe sooner, pumping much-needed sand onto Camp Ellis Beach. You've also supported this county's beach management plan, which hopefully we can merge with our beach management plan and, and produce something very, very important. And I just wanted to, to thank you. You've, you've been on the forefront of all those issues, probably more than I, than I'm missing, but we thank you, wish you well, and also thank the council for supporting us as well. And we still have a long road to go, but you got us a lot closer to where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, that is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the August 11, 2025 minutes?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion on those minutes? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I would like to note for the record, I believe there was some confusion during the adoption, the July 28 minutes on the August 11 evening. Again, I can only speak for myself, so Counselor Hatch, you can confirm, but I believe the amendment that Counselor Hatch put forward was originally intended to be part of the July 14 minutes, which had been previously adopted. So unfortunately, and this is really where I'm going with this, the July 14 minutes were not redlined changes. So I can understand where Counselor Hatch got a bit confused. It also has led to an action that's rather hard to discern what we were really doing there. So I would really just like to point out going forward that if we're going to make changes to the minutes, that council then receives redlined versions of those changes, so we don't have this type of hiccup again. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. Noted. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Counselor Redwoods?
Abstain.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0 with one abstention. Okay, moving on to item eight, that is consent items this evening. There are two. Item A is a special council meeting for September 9, 2025, and item B is the annual report filing extension. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Gunn and Counselor Johnston.
I would like to pull consent item A.
Okay, there is a, so we will move item A, and that will become item A under action. Counselor Johnston?
I'd like to pull item B.
And, okay, we will pull item B. That will become item B under action. Okay, so there are no consent items to approve this evening. Moving on to number, item number nine, that is the action items. First item up is item A, which is the special council meeting for September 25, September 9, 2025, and that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On August 11, 2025, the council approved the September, October, November, and December 2025 meeting dates. It has been determined that a special meeting is needed to conduct interviews for candidates for the city administrator position during an executive session. The additional meeting will be on September 9, 2025, and will be held in person in the City Hall auditorium. I move, the city council approves adding the special meeting on September 9, 2025, at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Parks. Any discussion on this item? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, now moving on to item B is the annual report filing extension. And that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The charter states that the city administrator must submit an annual report to the mayor and council at the end of every fiscal year. The council may extend the filing date of the annual report, section 3.4 Powers and Duties of the City Administrator, section F. Staff requests that the council grant this extension in order to allow adequate time to gather the necessary information. On July 14, 2025, city council approved a 45-day extension for filing the annual report. City staff is still awaiting the fiscal year 2024 post-audit report excerpts, and an additional extension is needed for this necessary information to be provided. I move to grant staff an additional 45-day extension for filing the annual report.
Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. And discussion or comments on the item? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So I understand the, the reason for the delay, and it's certainly not city staff-related. And I, as 45 days ago or thereabouts, I said at that time, you know, I, I support the extension. However, as I've also said several times, the audit being delivered this late is unacceptable, and I have to state that again. Waiting on FY 2024 to be delivered when we're in the process or thereabouts beginning the FY 2025 audit process, while we're also now in FY 2026, again, it's unacceptable. Charter and state law requires that we have annual audits. It's, you know, I guess some people don't find them nearly as interesting as, as I might, but it's a fundamental tool that's required for council to really be able to govern appropriately. You know, and again, I, I know for some of you, I've said this multiple times over the years, but I'm going to reiterate it because it's important to me. The code requires the acceptance of the audit, right? That is to be done by January. We're now in almost September. Council is supposed to designate those expenditures by February of the same year, two years later. And again, this isn't a criticism of city staff. We, we are where we are because of our auditing firm. So this past budget cycle, I'm sure you all remember, we had several council actions that designate, designated, undesignated funds for use. There was questions at the time about where we were with the audit. We still do not have those audited financials. I, again, supported it at the time. I felt it was, and I think other councilors did too, a bit risky to take those actions. But as I recall, most of those expenditures were really transferring funds into another city fund. It wasn't expenditure out to a different entity, so I was somewhat comfortable. So again, I can understand the, the perceived lack of auditors that I've heard, except I went on the, on the state's website this past weekend, and I looked that with our particularly auditing firm, they represent 24 municipalities. Eleven of those municipalities, including us, are waiting on FY 24. Another 11 are waiting for FY 2023. If you then go and look up the other auditing firms in the state that practice municipal audits, you'll find that they are delivering audits in a timely manner. Now, you know, this isn't apples-to-apples. I get that. Some communities might be smaller, but I can look at a community that's similar to ours, like Scarborough. Their FY 2024 report has been delivered within four or five months of the close of the fiscal year. So again, the delay that the audit creates, you know, we have situations where, again, at council level, we're making decisions without a clear understanding, and I fully believe that there's really, you know, likely no concerns there. It generally hasn't ever been found. But the fact of the matter is, is that our governing documents require these, these dates and for us to act upon them. And I've been uncomfortable for the last couple of years, this, this has occurred. And so, again, I'm going to state for the record, I am asking that the city council, in this upcoming year, this cycle, we consider the review of this relationship that we have with the auditing firm. There are other auditors. I know of several auditors that are in the state that have recommended that we seek outside. It seems as though current auditing firm is overworked, I guess. I, I don't have an answer, but, you know, as I've said in the past, it's also been the sole auditor of this municipality for 35-plus years, and to me, that's just like, again, unacceptable. We should always have fresh eyes on something, you know, certainly after three decades. So that, that's it. But I, as I stated, I do want those comments, whether they're summarized or verbatim for the record. Thank you.
Your Honor,
Yes, please.
I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Johnston. In all the years that I've worked in municipal government, I have never seen an audit this late. I can tell you, Counselor, that I've been bugging them every day, and I did reach out to our city attorney to determine is there anything I can do through any state agency to, you know, either cite them or do something like that. So I think Leah has, our council is looking. I, I am so frustrated, and you are absolutely right on with your comments, and there's no excuse for it. So I would say that it, something that should be looked at very carefully, should put out an RFP to deal with this, because it's just unacceptable. And, yeah, I've been, I've been waiting for at least draft financial statements, and again, I'll text them again. But I've been in contact with the, with the managing partner. There's no excuse for this, and I agree with you. And I think what I'll do is, I think we can do an RFP. It's not, you basically can get from other communities that have done it, a template, and we can go out and look for somebody. But you are, this shouldn't, this shouldn't happen. It's disgraceful.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? Counselor Hewitt?
For the record, do we have any assurance that the information will be provided within the 45 days?
Well, I'm of, you know, at this point, I will probably camp outside his doorstep or something because, and again, I'll be sending something again tomorrow. I will make sure the council's aware. Everything's ready to go. The audit, I mean, the annual report is all done. All we have left to do is get these financial statements, and I will be working on that again tomorrow.
Just to add to that,
Yeah, please.
To add to that, Counselor Hewitt, you know, as the city minister has stated, the, the city staff, they, each department's responsible for their own annual report. I've always found that, you know, that they're pretty good at getting it right, ready to go, and then we're sitting around and just waiting for that CAFR portion of the report, and that's the holdup. So, and again, that's something that state law requires that we also submit. So, and as I said, maybe not everybody finds them interesting, but I, I always, you know, hunker down and read both the CAFR and the hunker down and read both the CAFR and the annual report. I find they're very helpful for, you know, our decision-making.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to item C, which was formerly item A, that is one reading, order to authorize the lease purchase of six new municipal vehicles in the principal amount not to exceed $465,000, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. The City of Saco is planning to purchase six new municipal vehicles through a capital lease with municipal leasing consultants for a not-to-exceed amount of $465,000. These purchases were planned as part of the city's fiscal year 2026 approved budget in its capital improvement plan. City Council is asked to review and authorize this lease purchase. The city's bond counsel attorney, Drummond Woodsum, has written the attached order. Be it ordered that the City Council approve the order entitled, "Order to authorize lease purchase of six new municipal vehicles in the principal amount not to exceed $465,000", and that an attested copy of this order be filed with the minutes of this meeting. I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion or comment on the item? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just wanted to point out publicly if, and I'm assuming my council colleagues did exactly what I did, went back to the approved budget for each of these six items, and by my calculations, we actually approved in the capital budget collectively $488,276. And if we're at a not-to-exceed $465, I think that kind of points out that often overlooked how I feel responsibly our staff spends budgeted money. So in these transactions alone, we stand to have a budget surplus, if you will, of roughly $23,000. So I thought it was very important to publicly acknowledge that, and my experience with staff is this is a technique that I see all the time. So I think we ought to be able to publicly recognize their efforts to spend money like it's their own, and in the essence, in this transaction, save us some money as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to item D, which was formerly item B, and that is the first reading, budget amendment request for the inventory analysis initial outreach to help fund a local comprehensive beach management plan, and that is Counselor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The City of Saco has received a proposal for inventory analysis initial outreach to help fund a local comprehensive beach management plan. The cost of this inventory analysis initial outreach step, the first step of this process, has been proposed at $46,000. To move this initiative forward, $46,000 could be used from unassigned fund balance for this project through a budget amendment process. The goal of the overall local comprehensive beach management plan is to provide a single consolidated document which advises the City of Saco on short and long-term conceptual strategies to maintain existing coastal shoreline with minimal loss of private property, public infrastructure, and public resources, while providing guidance for long-term partnerships with private property owners and county, state, and federal agencies. This initial step were to be funded, the amount needed to complete the plan is estimated at $141,000. City staff plan to apply for a community action grant through the Community Resilience Partnership to help offset the total planned cost and will report back to City Council once additional information is available about the status of the grant submission. If the City Council chooses to move forward to this budget amendment to fund this proposal, the final reading would be scheduled for September 8th. Be it ordered that the City Council approve the first reading of the $46,000 budget amendment request from unassigned fund balance to fund the inventory analysis initial outreach phase for a local comprehensive beach management plan, and further to schedule the final reading of this item on September 8th, 2025, I move to approve the order.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion or comment on the item? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I spoke about the need for this previously, and I don't really want to reiterate myself too much here, except to note that I think staff really captured the need for this in the background. We really need a comprehensive look, both short-term and long-term, of what the city can do and what we expect our partners to do, and create a strategic plan moving forward for beach management. We've seen back-to-back storms. We saw an erosion event over the weekend. We really need the community to be organized around this. As we heard from the podium earlier, Saco has had earlier stabs at beach management. We filed one with the Fish and Wildlife Association years ago, I think, 2008. We've also, you know, have the pipe and plover and the dog ordinance, but really with the investment that the Army Corps is making, with the investments the county is making, with the annual investments the city makes in sand replenishment, road maintenance, and other tasks, it's really time to have a comprehensive document that we can use to guide us, that gets input from those community partners, that gets input from the public, and that can really guide our efforts going forward. So I think this is a necessary step in this process, one that's come up at public events from beach residents and others multiple times recently. So I'm really grateful for this effort.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So as I stated at the prior meeting, I support a beach management plan, again, in concept, particularly as we move forward with the Army Corps of Engineers project. However, as I also often state, process, you know, is a big thing for me. And so to that point, to my prior comments earlier about the issues with the audit, we have a request here to allocate $46,000 from the unassigned fund balance. And so I got two items that are important to me. And I doubt that council has Chapter 15 in front of them, but that's what I'm referring to. 15-28, which is surplus, or the unassigned fund balance that hasn't been allocated. This area or this provision lays out how these funds can be appropriated. The words and intent matter. I find it hard to place the speech plan into one of the categories. You know, you might be able to squeeze into item C, which happens to be specifically targeted infrastructure projects or other capital expenditures required by the city, but again, I don't find the plan being specific infrastructure, nor is it a requirement. 15-29, administration, the language there, and this is key, going back to the audit, "Upon acceptance of the city's annual audit by the City Council, the city administrator shall determine status of the unassigned." We still do not have a status of that unassigned. Where this is different than my prior comments about our actions during the budget, we're now outing money from the city to a private entity with this action. So this, you know, again, first glance didn't have an issue with it. The more I thought about it, I referred back to the grievance petition that two of my other fellow counselors participated in, and I thought that there was certainly, I don't want to say it was necessarily spelled out, but there was clear frustrations with the failure of the city to adhere to our governing documents or regulations. So again, I'm trying to lay this out in front of us and to not ignore this. Now, I'm not saying that we shouldn't move forward with approving this. Really, the audit is checks and balance. We don't have that. So without that, I, like I said, not opposed to the expenditures, I'm simply asking that we find a different fund, whether it's the capital fund. Counselor Hatch, you just pointed out that we could have a surplus of $24,000, so there's part of it we could make up straight out of the capital or contingencies. So when we come, bring this back, really all I'm seeking is not using the unassigned fund balance until we have that audit. Thank you.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I share Counselor Johnston's concern about the unassigned fund balance surplus and the need for the audit, so I don't want my comments to be read in any other light. The audit is essential as we spend the surplus. However, I would also point out that our unassigned fund balance in that same Chapter 15 is required to be set between 8.33% and 16.67%, and fluctuate within that range. We are likely well over the 16.67%, but of course, we can't count on that because we don't have those audited numbers. Nevertheless, we are allowed to expend our undesigned funds as long as it stays within that range. So whether we view this as surplus or normal expenditures from the undesigned fund, I think really gets at the crux of what Counselor Johnston is talking about, and I'm sure this amount would leave us between that range of 8.33% and 16.67%. So I'm less concerned about thinking this as an expenditure of surplus as we would need to do once we get the audited numbers, as opposed to a regular use of the undesigned fund, and in my mind, I could move forward in that light.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, moving on to item E, which was formerly item C, that is the public hearing for the Technical Design and Construction Standard Manual, TDCSM, and the update, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. City staff from Public Works, Water Resource Recovery, and Planning have been drafting critical updates to the city's Technical Design and Construction Standards Manual, or the TDCSM. This manual, originally adopted by City Council on March 22nd, 2021, details the city's standards for streets, drains, and sewer systems. This update adds pump station details and requirements, municipal street lighting requirements, traffic signal standards, and a list of standard conditions of approval and requirements, along with updated forms for compliance purposes. There are several reserved sections for future standards to be incorporated. I move to open the public hearing on the Technical Design and Construction Standards Manual update.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hewitt. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to open the public hearing at 7:06. Passes seven zero. If there are any members of the public wishing to speak, please step forward, state your name and address for the council, and you will have three minutes to address. Okay, not seeing anyone seeking recognition. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I move to close the public hearing and further to schedule the second final reading on this item for September 8th, 2025.
Thank you. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion or comment on the item? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to close the public hearing and schedule the next meeting for September 8th, 2025. Passes at 7:07. Okay, moving on to item F, that is one reading of the acceptance of temporary construction easement for the Saco School Project. That is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As part of the Saco School Construction Project, temporary construction easements will be necessary. Temporary easement locations are reflected on the easement exhibit, along with a sample temporary construction easement form. Drummond Woodsum, legal counsel for both the city and schools, has requested that the City Council formally authorize acceptance of these easements for this project. Be it ordered that the City Council authorize the city administrator to accept the easements and any related documents, all of which shall be in a form acceptable to the city's legal counsel. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Any discussion or comments on the item? Okay, not seeing any. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Okay, that completes the action items for tonight, and moving on to item 10, that is new business, and that is an update to the administrative code.
Your Honor, if I might.
Yes, please.
This was brought up a couple months ago by Counselor Johnston, and I did review the administrative code with the deputy city administrator. It really is in need of update. We encourage the council, once you have reviewed what we have put together, we've tried to streamline it, make it exactly what we have and how we're doing things today. The administrative code, as it stood before, really did not reflect that. So we, this is just the first shot at it, and we want to make sure the council's comfortable with it as we go forward, and I'll let the deputy city administrator walk you through this.
Thank you. So we have presented an updated version of the administrative code. It references the organizational chart that was approved through the budget process. Additionally, at the back, you'll see there's a crosswalk document because we did not provide red lines. We walked you through the old section, the new section numbering, and how we got to where we got. A lot of this has been renumbered to be alphabetically in order of each department, so it's a little easier to read, and the different department heads have weighed in on their sections. Additionally, we've added departments that were not reflected anywhere in city documentation. This is not making any specific department a necessary department. I know we have that charter provision. It's just simply stating that this is how we operate and indicating that the departments exist. I tried really diligently to put on a resident hat here. If I was trying to figure out how the city operated and wanted to go to this section, could I do it? So I think we're closer to being able to figure that out as a resident, but I would really appreciate any comments and feedback on this.
Certainly, we'll, you know, this is something that can be ongoing. We want to make sure that the City Council's comfortable with this. So tonight, obviously, you don't have to respond tonight, but take a look at this. The deputy city administrator will be taking in comments. You can get to her directly, and we'll work this through so that we have a document that is actually in place that reflects the operation for the city.
Any possible timeline for the next possible draft for counselors to get their comments into you?
It would be ideal if we could have comments by the end of next week. If that's too short of a notice, we can certainly go out longer.
Counselors, do you feel that's time to give a quick review and kind of get the first round? Okay, Counselor Berman?
Yeah, just a quick note. On the current code, 424 is the legal division. On the current thing, it looks like it's 425, but I noticed the city solicitor seems to be missing from the tree, as far as I can tell. So if we could just add that somewhere on the figure, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think we need to add that one, as well as indicate where public health division falls. You'll see a couple of items like that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, as noted by the administrator, this is something that, well, certainly current council members and several prior counselors have heard me speak to for several years. It's long overdue. I think the last time it was updated was probably 1995, so I just want to say that I appreciate us collectively taking this on and staff's efforts on it.
Okay, so we would tentatively be looking at September 5 for the first round of comments or changes, anything that you may notice, and those can be emailed directly to me. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I just want to acknowledge to Counselor Johnston that I've been listening to you for four and a half years with great interest, so I'm happy that we finally got this thing moving forward. You've been a champion of this change, and it's been needed, so I'm happy that that is occurring. I will make whatever contributions I can in my remaining, my remaining time, and never forget, the squeaky wheel does get the grease.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much.
And I have copies for members of the public. If you want to see me in the back, I'll give you a copy of what I distributed to the counselors. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number 11, that is the administrative update. City Administrator Bohanko?
Thank you, Your Honor. RFP Fire Department, 2026 Chevrolet Tahoe. The city of Saco is soliciting bid proposals from qualified vendors that can provide sales, service, and delivery for a 2026 Chevrolet Tahoe 4x4SSV. Bid documents can be found on the city's website under the bids in RFP webpage. Bids will be accepted until 1:30 PM on Wednesday, September 10, 2025, at the finance office, Saco City Hall, 300 Main Street, Saco, Maine. Boom Road culvert work, Boom Road will be closed between Smutty Lane and High Point Drive from August 18 to September 30, 2025, for culvert replacement by a contractor. An aging corrugated metal pipe culvert will be replaced by a precast concrete box culvert to improve stream crossing and fish passage. Access around the work area will be limited to local traffic only, but the duration of the project, the work schedule is subject to change due to weather. Thank you for your patience. We, you know, and I know Public Works thanks the public for their patience on this critical infrastructure replacement. Joint BPAC and Traffic Safety Committee meeting, there will be a joint BPAC and Traffic Safety Committee meeting to discuss the transportation master plan priorities. The meeting will take place on August 27, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the training room at Saco Public Works, 15 Phillips Spring Road, Saco. Please visit the city's website for more information. I also want to let people know there are some open positions still, and the city of Saco currently has these positions in several departments. You can visit the sacomaine.org to learn about the current openings. We're excited to have people join our team. And of course, just remind you of the upcoming holiday, that we're closed on Monday, September 1, 2025, in observance of Labor Day. Your Honor, I just want to take a little personal privilege to thank you and the city council for your support during my tenure here. There are many things that we move forward that I'm very happy about, and I think the council should be proud of with regards to that. I mean, some of the major things, I go on, but I think you deserve a lot of the credit for helping us move these things along, especially the combined maintenance with the schools and the city, which is turning out well and getting a lot of positive feedback on that, just working on coastal resiliency. But without the council's support and the mayor's support, a lot of these things wouldn't happen, so I just want to thank you.
Any comments or questions for the city administrator? Okay, John, on behalf of myself, I personally want to thank you for the last two years. You came in to a brand-new community, not even relatively close to us. You not only learned the job, you learned the community, you learned to know our residents, all of the wonderful special things that make Saco Saco, and you put your whole heart into the last two years. And as you just stated, and I think that helped us in the aspect of getting items moved, and again, backing the council, backing myself, so again, I just, I cannot give enough thanks to you for my first two years as mayor, to have such a supportive and strong administrator by my side. So thank you, and I wish you the best of luck. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. I'm just going to add a little bit. First of all, Little Birdie told me today that it's John's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
So if we were at Rotary, we'd sing to you, but I'm not doing it here because it's too embarrassing. I won't tell you how old he is, but he's that much closer to his required minimum distributions in his 401K. But John, I just wanted to share some personal comments, as Mayor McPhail has done on the eve of your departure. For me, it's been a real pleasure working with you over the past couple of years. I feel like we're two kindred spirits, connected by many decades of professional experience in our fields, and we were brought together with the rest of the council to tackle the many challenges facing the city. I believe it's a generational thing, but I value our collaboration, and I feel like it's been very productive and rewarding. For those citizens who don't pay much attention to what happens at City Hall, I can tell you that managing municipal government is a complex mix of challenges, and John has helped us tackle many of these issues in a very effective way. The benefits we've gained from his professional experience and his willingness to find productive solutions have been very valuable, and for that, we should all be very thankful to John. John, I understand your decision to resign from the city administrator's role was a tough one for you. It's clear to me that you dedicated your heart and soul to making Saco a better place, and from my perspective, you're a very true professional. We all wish you could stay longer, but we also respect why you can't. I appreciate that we can continue to benefit from your knowledge and experience as we tap into your, your skills as a consultant during the month of September while we search for a new city administrator. So like Mayor McPhail, I just want to personally wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards?
I did give you a card, but I can summarize what I, what I wrote. Basically, coming on in this new role, I may seem self-assured, but I was a little shaky, and I do appreciate your kindness, your welcome, your, your guidance as I embrace this new role, and I'm very happy to have joined this elite council under your administration. So thank you so much.
Counselor Berman?
It's hard for me to turn down a microphone, I guess. No, I just really want to echo what everybody else has said, and just to add on that I think you joined us at a challenging time for Saco, a period of transition, and what you brought to this community in just those two short years has really, I think, helped move us forward and set a culture in the city that hopefully will go on, and that I think it's a real loss to the city that you're leaving. I think that we benefited from your experience, knowledge, and skill set, and I think you're going to leave really big shoes to fill for the next person, and so I'm sorry to see you go, but I'm glad you were here.
Counselor Hewitt?
John, I just want to thank you for both the everyday things you do to keep Saco running so well, keeping our staff going and happy, and keeping us at full staff has taken a lot. In addition, dealing with this council, I know we're a lot of different ideas and individuals, but you did it with grace, and I want to thank you for the calm way you handled any emergency that came up. There were a lot of unexpected things in the last few years, and you handled them all well. Thank you for all you've done.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, what can I say, John? It's, you know, I've been here for about six years. I've had two city administrators and one interim, and when Counselor, when Mayor Doyle nominated you, I was enthusiastic to confirm you because you had exactly what I was looking for, and I thought that the city needed. We, you know, with COVID, we had put a lot of things on hold, and even before COVID, though, we had a lot of stuff that was, we were sort of treading water on, and we weren't really having, being proactive about it, and we had to have, in my judgment, a city administrator who was proactive in leading the staff and taking full advantage of the staff's good talents, to have that organization that we needed to move a lot of stuff forward. And again, in only about a year and a half, we made a tremendous amount of progress under your leadership, and, I mean, you see it reflected in the people that are legitimately sad, and I'm one of them to see you go, and at the same time, I can say as a point of personal privilege, in terms of my interactions with a city administrator, I have never seen a city administrator so proactively partner with the mayor in a positive relationship that reflects the spirit of the charter in which we have the professional leadership of the city, but at the same time, we still expect and welcome when staff has a collegial view in terms of how we, the well-meaning amateurs, can come in and offer our policy ideas on the public's behalf and not be turned away. On the contrary, you have been very proactive in seeking out council intent, giving council informed guidance on what we can and can't do, at the same time, been open to our ideas because at the same time, there is no, there is no textbook how to do this, though. We come up here, we have well-meaning ideas, some of them are pretty cockamamie, and some of them are actually pretty decent. We actually have a professional who's been doing this a long time that can actually help you flesh it out, and this gentleman here is one of those people. So to lose that institutional knowledge that he had from his previous experience transferred to Saco is a significant loss, but at the same time, you know, we have a good crew up here. We're going to be in good hands with Emily Cole Prescott at the end of the week, and I know in a couple weeks, we'll have a new person up and running, maybe, hopefully. But at the same time, I'll take a moment and say this is a tremendous loss, and I've enjoyed working with you. I've never had a city administrator, it makes me feel so, that I have more ownership in the government, and that is a credit to you, and that is a benefit to me on behalf of the citizens that send me here. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I'll be quick. I think everybody else summarized my experience with, with John. I think we have, still have, but had a lot of challenges, and, you know, John came in and very quickly took the bull by the horn, so to speak, and looking back, you know, as I did this weekend, thinking about it, you know, we've had a lot of successes with, with John as city administrator, and I think most importantly, I think the city, I feel good about the city as far as how we're positioned going forward. It's not like, meanwhile, his, your resignation was a, was a shock, it wasn't like, oh, what the heck are we going to do? I look at it and, you know, feel as though, you know, we're well-positioned, and that is because of, you know, what you've given us for the last two years. So just personally, I want to say I appreciate the time that you've given to the community.
Thank you. Counselor Parks?
I want to thank the city administrator for the respect, the dignity, and the professionalism that he brought to the role of city administrator. I just got to tell you that there were many times when my constituents would come to me with issues, and I'd look at these things, and I'd say, what are we going to do about that? I had no clue. I put in one email to the city administrator, it's done in a day, okay? I think it's important, well, I like to do this, I like to take away lessons from people that I learned in my life, and the lesson I learned from city administrator Bohanko is that if you are facing a great challenge, if you readjust your mindset just a little bit and approach it as an opportunity, then you may just be better off. So thank you, John, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 11, I'm sorry, moving on to item 12, that is council discussion and comment. Any counselors have anything to share? Counselor Hatch, then Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. The mayor, for many years, has been trying to prompt me to go down to the Camp Ellis General Store for lunch, and my wife and I finally went on Sunday, and I have to tell you, I told the fine folks there that I was going to make a shameless promotion for them at the council floor tonight. We had the best chicken salad sandwich I think I've ever had, and the atmosphere, the friendliness, just the aura of the whole thing was, was extremely, extremely pleasant. So my wife took a look at the menu, and I guess we're going to go back and do a breakfast probably soon, but I just want to highlight that because I've lived here, you know, I don't know, 40 some-odd years, it's the first time I've been to the Camp Ellis General Store, and I'm going back.
Grab that cookie with it next time, too. Counselor Hatch? Counselor Gunn, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll divert from my statement I was going to make and say that far be it from me to be not open to new experiences, I think I'll head down there, get myself a nice sandwich, you know, and King Cold potato chips, and take a second shot at trying a moxy, because I've tried two already, I hate it, but they say 30 times the charm, so we'll see what happens here. But before we went to executive, though, I did want to comment on a member of the public who did speak about the grievance process, and basically give her just a little bit of, and give the public for that matter, just a little bit of background philosophically in terms of how I'm feeling, though, because obviously, we had three of us and three different perspectives on how we approached that process, and we had some consent, some of unanimous, some it was pretty much, you know, it's, you have three people in there, so if two agree, then, then there you go. When it came to the issue of public testimony in terms of the planning board, I had mixed emotions about it, but at the same time, the reason I signed off on it to at least send it to the council to, to then talk about the particulars is from my perspective, because I was there as a planning board liaison that night, and it was a long, fruitful discussion about the legalese of the public testimony and how you, how that compares to the experts and all that. One of the reasons that the, unfortunately, and it was no one's intent, but the reason the whole thing kind of went south was the perception that, put it this way, the staff was correct in reminding the planning board, based on their understanding of MMA previous statutes, that a certain type of information needed to be backing planning board decisions. That being, that being said, we know what happened when that case ended up in, in district court. We, the planning board is a quasi-judicial entity, therefore, these people have a oath and a right in good faith to essentially vote any way they want, with the understanding that if they don't give them, if the vote has no legal backing, good faith legal backing, that it won't probably survive a court challenge. That being the case, it certainly is a good faith effort for staff to tell a planning board, or at least advise a planning board, that maybe what they're doing is not the most prudent action. That being the case, by putting the language in there that says, this is the language, this is the action we're going to take, and we're going to base it off of, say, testimony as opposed to expert testimony, or however you want to do it, we are legally giving ourselves cover, at the same time legally empowering our planning board to do what they feel is best, regardless of future potential legal consequences. And really, as, while that gives, it's a little, it's, I'm a little iffy about that, but at the same time, by putting that in there, we do not have to worry about the, the public, especially if the public is really focused and really has a consensus on an issue, thinking there's anything untoward or bad faith about how staff is informing or advising the planning board, because again, the planning board being quasi-judicial, they have that freedom to act as they see fit. So I am eager to basically get that item in front of us and to go over the particulars, though, because it certainly is going over, worth, worth hammering out some of the details, but at the same time, the intent was certainly, I mean, you could say it certainly was reactive from the Lincoln Street situation, but at the same time, since the court did decide in a way that seemed a bit contrary to what MMA's sort of legal opinion was going in, because there was no SOP, and that was all the planning board had to work with, it's definitely definitely going to be a prudent discussion, though, because again, just something that covers everybody's basis, so it doesn't become an argument of, the old thing, attitude, where it doesn't become an argument of how you're arguing versus what the actual argument is, and that is what caused that whole situation, in my opinion, as a planning board liaison to go south. And I think this is going to be a good step in the direction of making sure that doesn't happen in that particular form again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Edwards?
Yeah, if my understanding is correct, the start of the new school year is ramping up later this week. Am I correct on that? You know? Yeah, I am, okay.
Today was the, teachers are back now.
Teachers are back, okay.
Students are Wednesday, I think.
Wednesday, yeah. So I would just like to remind the drivers in Saco who have, to my knowledge, have been incredibly patient with all the construction and all the changes, that it's time to ramp it up a little bit more because you will see some of our younger citizens trying to do their best to get learning in, and we'd like to have them do it safely. So please pay attention, please be aware of any buses and local speed decreases near schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Counselor Edwards just touched upon my first topic, which again was, you know, school's back in session beginning Wednesday. But along those same lines, I was going to speak to being aware, really more than anything, aware and understanding, I guess is the word I'm looking for. Like, there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of construction, certainly out by the middle school, there's a ton of construction. And, you know, we're all in a rush to get where we're going and kind of forget that there's other people in the world. I know I certainly have witnessed that all summer long as I look out my window or even stand on the sidewalk and watch people do insane things just because they're angry and they want to go somewhere. But certainly with kids back out there, we need to be more attentive to that. And the second thing, which I find odd that in 2025, I'm even going to bring this up, soliciting, right? This is something going door-to-door that I thought ended twenty years ago with the invention, or at least a robust internet or mailings, but there's been an increase of solicitation. What I mean by that is, again, door-to-door sales. I know there's some chatter out there on the internet about it. I personally had a pretty horrible experience myself this past week, which I will say certainly wasn't a moment of restraint for me, when I found, you know, two individuals creeping around, not just a door, but all the doors and my windows, when I knew that my daughter was home by herself. So the response was very aggressive, to the point where I thought after, I was like, well, maybe I shouldn't have been that harsh, but again, then I spoke with other people in the neighborhood, and they're like, oh, yeah, we experienced the same thing. So we do have a chapter in code that governs peddling and solicitation. It probably needs to be updated. You do need a permit to do such activities, which I don't think any of these people, in fact, when I asked for a card, I was told to go F myself, which, like I said, wasn't a moment of restraint in my response. So I just, I know it's out there, and again, like I said, I've had other people mention this to me. So there's a variety of different companies, whether it solar credits, solar power, solar panels, internet, you name it. And I think Counselor Edwards, maybe you brought this up prior, but it's my first experience with it. So like I said, I guess be aware, because I was only two properties over, and the only reason I knew that someone was at the back door is because my camera system let me know, but then I found them, and again, my back door was wide open, inside screaming, you know, hollering to who I knew was home alone, was my daughter, and it's like, what are we doing? You know, it's one thing to knock, it's another thing to, you know, be that invasive. So just something to look out for, and like I said, maybe we take up chapter 156 at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to item 13, that is executive session. Is there a motion? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSI Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, A Personnel Matters, City Administrator's Search, and C Lease Request.
Thank you. Motion has been made to enter executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to enter executive session passes seven zero at 7:38, and we will be downstairs in the conference room.
Hey everyone, welcome back. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion to exit executive session passes 7-0 at 8:42. Is there a report?
No report.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 15, that is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Edwards. Roll call vote, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston. Motion to adjourn at 8:42 passes 7-0 and thank you everyone and have a great evening.